The balance here, the moment's near, your voices loud, it's crystal clear. Kiwi dreams and hopes collide, truth to ones no standard is pride. Kids in the ballot where we belong, every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line, together we shake this land divine. The future's written in your hand, a chance to guide and take a stand. Community rising, hearts aligned, in battle we shake this land divine. And good afternoon and welcome to say it's been the ballot show for that. Uh, to hear the one week general war show, I see that right here today, so it's a lot of fun trying to remember all these more things. Uh, this will be one of three shows that we'll be doing because there's over future here that's standing but pointing to the pump up. If you're re-elected, this one could stick in anyway, that's your vote. Hey, we're coming here live from the each capital square, each community art centre and the England Royal Room, where we've done many of the ballot shows from Palmerston North. Now today, uh, we will be giving our four of four candidates who have put their bets in the ballot file and they will get ready and kick off with why they should become one of the 13 councillors. So many of them, uh, 15 councillors that will be elected tomorrow there. Uh, now let's kick off with William, you need to go first, you're one of the open summit of why you should receive this question.
Well, thank you very much and I really appreciate you having me here today. I'm not entirely sure if my microphone's working, but hopefully you can hear me online. Uh, my name's William Wood and I'm proud to have been one of your city councillors for the last three years. And for me being on city council is about not just complaining about problems, but actually putting your hand up to do something about it. I'm really proud of my record and helping Palmerston North be one of the bottom 15 cities in the country in terms of rate rise over the last three years. And that's been a real challenge of mix of recommendations involving reducing capital spending, things like not spending $55 million on a shared pathway to Ashurst, or like reducing our consultancy spend by a million dollars that I put up at the last annual budget. I've either moved or seconded over 35 recommendations in my three years on council to make sure that we could get the best value for money for every single rate payer dollar that goes into the pot. But it's also not just about reducing spending, it's about supporting investing in our community when we need to. I was really excited to second the motion to extend gold car parking uh, from nine till 3pm as a way of giving back to our seniors who've given so much to our community. I'm really excited about the new arena five that we're looking at building. So if you put me back on your council, I promise to be a voice for common sense and reason around the council table, always bringing ideas on how we can get the best for you.
Your one minute only, say one.
Uh, Kiara, I'm Lorna Johnson. I'm currently sitting councillor and chair of the community committee. Um, I'm standing for council again because I think it's really important that we have someone on council who will advocate strongly for the community. We're a diverse and inclusive community in Palmerston North, we look out for one another. And I want to make sure that council is there uh, to assist where necessary, to provide the necessary support for people, services like libraries, uh, community centres, programmes, um, supporting community groups. So that's my prime motivation for standing for council. I'm also standing as a Labour candidate so that you know where my values lie. And one of the things I'm really proud about in the time that I've been on council is work that I've done to make rates fairer. So um, it's easier to talk about uh, how we should cut rates, but uh, it's more, much more complicated to talk about how the distribution of rates should be changed to make it fairer for those who really are struggling to pay. And so through a couple of changes that we've done through rating, I think that we've managed to make the distribution of rates in Palmerston North a lot fairer. So um, I do um, ask for your vote to be re-elected. I'm a hardworking and diligent councillor, I always do my homework and um, I'm well-connected in the community. So um, I'm asking for your vote to be returned uh, to do another term. So please vote for Lorna Johnson, number one, voice of experience. Thank you.
Uh, Kiara, my name's Richard Morgan, uh, this is my first time running for council. Um, I am a water infrastructure engineer, um, so I know um, a lot of Palmer's water assets inside and out. I've helped build them, helped fix them, um, and I think that experience is something that I can bring to the table. Um, I'm largely running for council because I believe the working people of the city um, deserve the voice at the table. Um, we're out there doing the mahi, you know, looking after you when you're sick, um, and all those sort of things, those lovely things that keep our city moving. Um, I'm a working class person, I'm a husband, a father, you know, and I believe in our city and I believe that we should be focusing on long-term solutions, um, not just slashing and burning everything that we see. Um, we need to build a better future, um, not just for our city in three years' time, but for our city in 30 years' time. Um, we now, you know, my grandkids and my kids um, got, um, so that's why I'm asking for your vote, um, for practical solutions so we can grow with the community together.
Good afternoon, um, my name's Michael Strachan, um, I am a first-time uh, candidate for Palmerston North City Council. Uh, basically, the reason why I have put my hand up and um, is because we are doing amazing things in the council, but I think we could do it a little bit better. Um, my policies are uh, mental health, um, education, um, accessibility, um, and then also cost of living as well. Um, yeah, so basically my, my background is facilitator, um, trainer for um, hospitality, go to schools and also um, corporate, corporate um, groups as well. So um, I have experience in adult teaching, uh, pretty much the ones who try and uh, make adult teaching a bit more fun, um, but also um, learning something new as well. So um, I have a lot of innovative new ideas that I want to bring to the table. Um, and I, yeah, thank you so much and uh, I look forward to, to talking to you.
So now this is going to be uh, to the uh, boss's round questions now. One of the council's about running things on volunteer organisations, you don't need to always give the volunteers the time. So today I'm going to play the role of both selling to a good candidate and for this year. So let's go sit down there and do the questions now. I can unbox some questions, but like the deal will only be a brief answer, so I should sit there and say, uh, take something from there. So I do, however, have lovely city sheet box questions here. When you put out a box, I will find a suitable question for it to be an answer. Now, with the way we do things here at It's in the Battle, we can pick in people, I've hardly ever been about to lose this electoral conference. I'm asking for a brand board sheet, so we don't always go, we'll put our names on a brand board sheet. So each candidate won't, uh, we'll, we'll be in a different order every time to keep, keep them on the toes. So Richard, you need to go first, what box number would you like to bet between 1 and 28? Oh, and I'd better actually explain the button cards and the deferred cards for standby. I'm quite, I'm quite the guy that one. Uh, each candidate gets two button cards, one deferred card, so if you give a question, that, uh, uh, if another candidate gets a question you like, you want to put in your answer, you tell me that you would like to use your button card and you can, and we can certainly leave you at that. And now it's a input to a third person. And for the deferred cards, if you give a question you don't want, you can defer it to another candidate. So Richard, you're still up first, what box number would you fancy?
Number one.
Number one, please, growing up the first person. That was um, interesting, that's upside down, no, it's upside down, got to go. Okay, so we have question F for Phosrot. There has been much media coverage about candidates' behaviour towards fellow candidates of the country. What pistol venues that make you a single candidate to be councillor?
I think it comes down to obviously respect, um, everyone on this, on this panel and everyone standing for council has put their name forward, um, to be a councillor. So that warrants a certain amount of respect from fellow councillors, um, you know, we're, and that also means that we're, you know, we will have robust discussion and, you know, we need to be able to challenge each other, but it needs to be done in a respectful way. Um, you know, that's what makes good governance, it's not just one side of the opinion, it's everyone's side of the opinion. Um, because I believe that um, good governance comes from all voices at the table, um, not just one side of it. Um, in terms of my personal qualities, um, to be suitable, um, you know, obviously I enjoy talking with people and, and conversing with people that don't agree with me because I believe that we learn more from discussing things with people that we don't agree with than with people that we do. Otherwise we end up being a little bit of an echo chamber and then you don't see the other side of the story. Um, so that's a big clear advantage on that one.
Okay, uh, next up, Michael, what box number?
What are we, uh, what is it up to?
Uh, well, we've got two to 28 available.
Two to 28, okay, excellent to check in. Um, let's go 16.
16, oh yes, uh, the driver's licence age. And uh, the age that uh, some people would like the voting age dropped to. Okay, we got E for Eco. Do you think the council should be involved in providing social housing and if so, how?
That is a, that is a good question. Um, can I defer that, please?
Yeah, who would you like to defer it to?
You seem pretty excited, yeah, yes, yep.
Oh, okay, then we won't call our button then, yeah. Oh, well, they was to put on a button, but if you wanted to defer it, they say it's the button card.
Okay, sweet, it sounds good to me.
Okay, that's great. Um, so yes, I'm a very strong believer that council should be involved in social housing. Um, it's something that our community has supported for very many years and um, we repeatedly get submissions from members of the community asking us to continue to provide social housing. Um, there's definitely a lack of affordable housing at the moment in Palmerston North for seniors and the majority of our social housing is provided for seniors and some for people living with a disability. Um, I am proud to say that um, during my time on council, we have extended the amount of social housing we have so that now we have 444 units and I very much hope that we'll be able to extend it further. Um, it may involve looking at different scenarios for how we parcel up the social housing to make it um, as cost-effective as possible. But I think the key thing is that that housing is available and income related rent to those who need it. So a strong supporter of social housing and I do think it's very much a council role, thank you.
Okay, Lorna, what box number?
Uh, 13.
13, okay. I'll take that part out because that just keeps getting in the way. Okay. We got P for Papa. Okay. Now, um, just uh, ignore this first part of the graphic because I think the first part of the, I, um... I will go with the question that's actually on there because that one seems a bit, um, um, seems to be a bit better. Many candidates use the word transparency in their campaign. What does transparency mean to you and how would you follow through on this promise?
Um, well, I think it's extremely important that when we're standing for election, we're clear about what we stand for, that people know what they're getting if they vote for you. And um, I think that transparency for me means standing um, as a Labour Party candidate. So people know where my values lie. It's very important that people understand that if they vote for me, they are getting a candidate that believes in equity and fairness. They're getting a candidate that believes in putting people first, et cetera. So I think we need to be transparent when we're standing about where our um, values lie and what people will be getting if they vote for us. And then when we're on council, we need to be making it clear um, what evidence has been used in decision-making. Um, one of the things that I think we've really improved in our time in council is trying to keep as many papers as possible in the public session and not putting as many papers through in the confidential session. So making, making all the evidence available so the public can see how it is we've come to our decisions and, and where they've come from.
Okay, William, what box number?
Number five.
Number five. Okay, U for Uniform. What should council's priorities be when making grants to the community?
I think you're having a bit of trouble there with your question, but I'm very happy to answer it at once.
Sorry, it's, it's, I'm doing multiple things at once.
I understand. So the question is, what should council's priority be on grants to the community?
Yes, that's correct, yep.
This is a really important question because what we know with councils, if every dollar we invest, it goes a lot further in the hands of our community. We've had some interesting discussions in the last term of council around what the size of that funding is. There's a careful bit, uh, line that we have to walk between not stepping into government space, but also making sure we support local organisations. So I'm really proud that we have Hancock House, for example, that's a council-owned facility where we offer um, space to a number of community organisations to operate out of, including things like our Manoa Two Multicultural Council. Um, for me, providing grants to the community is something that we can do when we've got the funds available and when we're in a good financial position. Um, I'm all for increasing our funds to the community by inflation year on year to make sure that we're not providing less. I do have some concerns around how far we can go, particularly the time we were facing double-digit or high single-digit rate rises. So it's a fine balance, but I certainly think council has a role to play there.
Okay, um, we have got for the first round of questions, let's get through to another round. Apologies for those who are at home, I do believe the wrong graphics have been loaded in, but we've had a very turbulent 24 hours, so they may have potentially been put in the wrong folder. Um, and we've not had the best run of the show, but hey, these things happen and we make the show happen. So Lorna, you to go first, what box number?
Seven.
Seven. And... Okay, we've got X for X-ray. Just want to ask, does that match with what should be on my card? Okay, that is nearly one of those, yeah, okay, I know, yep. Would you consider advocating for safe pedestrian crossings on our main arterial routes such as Pioneer Highway?
Uh, well, that's an easy one, yes, I would. Um, I have always advocated for safer pedestrian access, um, particularly um, in our neighbourhoods. And but it's also important that we've got safe crossings on the major arterial routes as well. Um, so for example, um, in my own neighbourhood of Highbury, um, there was um, repeated accidents on Highbury Avenue with schoolchildren, uh, at the end of day not being able to cross Highbury Avenue safely. And um, I advocated strongly for raised pedestrian crossings in Highbury Avenue, which have been put in, and um, a lot safer and there've been no further incidents. So I think I've got a good track record of advocating for pedestrian improvements and so I'd be very happy to support uh, further pedestrian access improvements on any of our roads, if that's what community want.
Uh, and just want to check, have I now got the right graphics on? Okay, so I was in the 7pm folder, not the 4pm folder. So that was a simple, ended up in the wrong folder and doing that because I was something like, I know I loaded in the graphics. So, okay, um... So a little bit flustered here. Uh, Michael?
Hello, uh, number seven.
Number seven. Uh, no, that's been taken, sorry. Do you want number eight?
Yeah, why not?
Okay, uh, I for India. Do you support implementing safe speed limits around schools in the Palmerston North City territory? Okay, yeah, I know what's happened on that one, that would have been pinged off the list that was on there and the name wasn't changed. So it's a question, but yeah, just the right district.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, yep, um, absolutely. Um, I think it is, um, yeah, important, imperative to, to make sure that around school areas, there is a, a safe speed limit. Um, there is a lot of people who ignore that limit at the moment and um, I think, um, yeah, a safer speed limit, absolutely. Um, also, um, probably higher penalties would be a, uh, an important thing to um, change the way that, that people think around schools when they're, when they're driving. Um, and that includes um, the little scooters as well, motorised scooters. Um, I think they need to be a little bit more done with that as well, but yeah. Um, yeah, my answers are normally pretty short and sweet, I'm not a, a big talker as much. Uh, but yeah, I definitely, definitely agree that there needs to be um, looked at. Um, yeah, and, and this, the scores very much are speed limits decreased, yeah.
Number 23.
Okay. Uh, now I'm nervous, so I'm hoping that's uh, in for mine. Uh, considering the, the central government messaging about councils being at all reasons, possibly making judgements.
Goodness, you couldn't have asked me a better question. Look, I strongly support what central government's trying to do in terms of rate capping and in terms of making sure that councils stick to the basics. Uh, my belief has always been uh, that council should look after your roads, your footpaths, your pipes and your core services like your parks and your um, parking services before extending into the other areas that we can offer. I've got no problem if council's in a good financial position, spending money on new community centres or new buildings or paths or that sort of thing, if we are in a position to be able to afford it. But when we're looking at over the next three years, not next three, apologies, next 10 years, needing a billion dollars of investment in our water assets alone, I think it's time for us to cut our cloth to what we can afford and live within our means. And I'm really proud in the last three years to have put up um, proposals or supportive proposals in the long-term plan to reduce our capital spend by $136 million, which got across the line. For every single dollar that council spends or borrows, it costs them $2 in the long run to pay it back, assuming around 5% interest. So I think we need to take a real close look uh, at what we offer and make sure that we're focusing our services on the needs of our community.
Um, well, um, I am not going to be taking any lessons on wasteful spending from a government that has just wasted $671 million of taxpayers' money on ferries that we don't even have. Um, but seriously, government is wanting to have uh, their cake and eat it too. They're wanting to say that councils are wastefully spending while at the same time heaping cost after cost after cost on us. So for example, um, just this, this recently, we've had extra costs put on us, over half a million dollars uh, to pay for the new water regulator, we've had the extra cost of the Murray Ward referendum. And at the same time, uh, we've had millions of dollars worth of uh, government subsidy removed from roading. So you can't, on the one hand, say that councils are wastefully spending and on the other hand, keep heaping and heaping costs on and taking subsidies away and then expect councils not to um, be able to manage. So I just think that there's a rhetoric from the government which is trying to cover their own uh, failings.
I think if I look at this from a little bit of a different perspective, is I look at it from the perspective of a, of a working person. Um, since Covid-19, CPI has gone up about 26%, well, because it only gone up by 13% at the same time. That's why most working people are feeling the hurt, it's because they're $150 worse off a week, every single week, 70% as Covid has happened. That is obviously a big drain on everyone, that hurts you at the checkout, that hurts you every, to everything that you spend and it hurts you at your rate, when you get your rate bill as well. And that's why the council needs to take a much more value for money approach when we're doing things, but we also need to build towards our future because you can't just kick the can down, down the road indefinitely. You need to build for a future, so then in 20 and 30 and 40 years' time, we're not sitting there holding the bag for the same problems that we made 20 years ago.
Do you guys want to check the bubble one?
Uh, no, I'm good at thinking that everything's been said that I, is in my head, so, yeah, yeah, it is well, it is very well.
Okay, uh, Richard, what box number? Okay, we've got Q for Community. What budget line item would you remove to help break the brakes down in Palmerston North without disrupting basic services?
I don't think it's necessarily a, a gassing approach of us, of an individual um, budget line. I think it's a small changes across every single budget line. Um, you need to take a more, much more methodical approach to how you look at all of the costs and the operating costs within the council. Um, in my experience, I have run an engineering company on the smell of an, on a, on the smell of an oily rag and it is a very difficult thing to do and a lot of, and I find the most important thing that I found was to save money in that, that job and that role was to get every single person at the council to buy into saving that money. It's not necessarily one big ticket item and one, you know, shiny thing that's going to solve our problems. It's small things that every, that all 600 people and even councillor and every person that's earning money within the council, um, they have the responsibility that they need to feel like it's their money and they need to have that, that desire to save money for the council and they need to have that also rewarded when they do.
It's a really good question, I completely agree with what Richard said. And so for the last three years, I've spent a lot of time going through councils' budgets line by line, getting an understanding of where we can do that. So I proposed or seconded 25 reductions at this most recent annual budget. And quite right, looking at every area of spending, can we reduce our catering costs? Can we reduce our marketing costs? Do we need to spend $120,000 a year on New Year's at the Square? Or could we do it $80,000 or $50,000? So for me, it's not just about tackling one thing, there is no one item in council's budgets in the next three years that is going to make a huge difference to rates. It's about scanning across the entire um, set of council's budgets and looking for areas where we can find savings. One of the things that concerns me the most about council is the $13 million we spend a year on consultancy. We managed to reduce that by a million dollars at long-term plan and another million this year at the annual budget, but that is still a huge amount of money to be shipping out of our city when we'd, could be building internal capacity. And so one of my focuses over the next three years will be, if I'm back at the table, working more on how we can continue to reduce that and bring discipline back into council spending.
Okay, let's get through another round in a new order. Uh, William, you need to go first, what box number?
Number 20.
Yes, the old, uh, voting agent one point tutorial. Yes, in turn for my friend, let's start by looking at the question. And we've got I love for Oscar. Issues around climate change are becoming more important. What are your thoughts on supporting a new robotic digestive digestion of food waste to produce the biogas similar to the plant, could refer up? Please note, this is not an incineration of general waste.
Yeah, it's an interesting question, to be honest with you. So one of the things we're doing at the moment is going through a waste um, management review of how we deliver that service and what we do and potentially looking at service sharing agreements with other councils where rather than each council having to operate their own fleet of trucks and all those people, could we bring it into one um, centralised plant and then offer that at a benefit to our rate payers charging out for that service? So one of the things absolutely we could look at um, is something along the lines of food waste. We do have it um, down the track in our plan to look at introducing a food waste collection service and we trialled that in the last three years and by all accounts from the reports I've read, the trial went reasonably well. I am in two minds about it, one part of me thinks it might be cheaper just to give everybody in town a compost bin and let them work on their own food waste. The other part of me thinks if we can make a resource out of it, like you're suggesting there, perhaps there'd be some value in it. So not a scientist, not an area of expertise, but it'd be an interesting one to look at.
Um, so obviously this area comes in sort of my area of expertise. I've spent a lot of time in the wastewater treatment plant in Palmerston North. Um, we already currently um, have a digestive system within our wastewater treatment facility. Um, and it's currently obviously going through upgrades and things like that, um, in, in that space. Um, so adding a uh, food waste system to that, we already have a lot of the knowledge and infrastructure in our teams um, to where we could find a good value for money on that, more so than other councils that would be starting from scratch. Um, and so that's, I think, something that definitely needs to explored. Um, I also believe that, you know, we need to take a much more regional view of our waste. Um, there's a lot of smaller councils around us that don't have the resources or capacity to be able to build these plants and Palmerston North, I think, could become a much more regional player and a, and a hub for all of that, all of our waste and our wastewater, uh, wastewater facilities and trade. regional player and a hub for all of our waste and our wastewater facilities and trade waste and things like that. I think that's something the next council needs to explore.
Michael, what box number?
Let's go on the twenties, twenty-four? I'll go with that, I have been listening. Here we go.
Okay, we've got B for violin. If you are elected as councillor, will you decelerate council spending or promote the greater projects and concentrate on budgetary infrastructure, things such as protein?
I like that, that's good. Yeah, I think so. I think there's a lot of, as going through the budgets from the previous years, I think there is a lot of things that the council has been looking at that is, in my own opinion, a little bit wasteful. Yep, holding up some festivals that can be stood on their own without any council funding for that and not really bringing money into Palmerston North as it should do. So I definitely think there is a workaround and is an able to shift money towards infrastructure, things that are really needing, just so, you know, as we go to work, we're not doing a slalom through the potholes and able a safer roading and infrastructure that we have here.
Richard, what box number?
Eighteen.
Oh, yes, good old floating and dripping action. Okay, we've got H for hotel. Do you support the central government's introducing rate caps on local apartments and why?
No, I don't. And that's largely because I think any time you cap someone's ability to pay for the core services that they provide, you are only risked because of disaster, especially if those caps are kept too low. I think in Palmerston North's system, we were doing quite well, we're about middle of the road in terms of our rate rises. By no means nationally are our rate rises extreme. But at the same time saying that, we obviously, as a council, we need to stay as value for money as we possibly can, you know, because every dollar that is wasted is a dollar that you can't spend on the services that you provide. And that's basically, that needs to be the mantra that the next council lives by is, you know, we need to basically plan for the future and make sure that every dollar is going to where it needs to go.
I've just hit some of these recently.
Okay. Sorry about this, this is what happens when people, when the wrong people connect to the wrong people. Okay. Yeah, something I hate is when people are micromanaging my production and broadcast. Yeah. Okay, we've got Lorna, what box number?
Three, if we haven't heard that one.
We got number three, yes. Okay, we've got S for site error. Did I get the right words on there? Yes. Palmerston North City Council has some cycleways along its arterial routes throughout the district. Is this a core function that Palmerston North City Council should provide or a nice to have?
Thank you. I do believe that provision of cycleways is a core function. And I really object to the kind of designation of some things as nice to have. If you had ten people in a room, they would not agree on what was nice to have and what was not on the city council. And in terms of cycling, I think we're responsible for the safety of people getting from A to B in the city, whether they're pedestrians, cyclists, they're going on buses or they're in cars or commercial vehicles. And cycleways are a proven way of keeping people safe on the road when they're on their bikes. So I know they're not universally popular and I know that some people, you know, are a little bit allergic to cycleways. But nevertheless, where we have put in cycleways, there has been an increase in the number of cyclists in the area and in particular, to take the example of Featherstone Street, there's been an increase in safety for cyclists and pedestrians.
Okay, and we've reordered the list and William, you get to go first, what box number?
Is twenty-five available?
Yes, it is. I assume that's not, you'll accept that number for some people ranking you or you probably want it a lot higher? Rather not, rather not. And I'd say that for all candidates, just because I think you can do that in Palmerston North, I've never had the fatal feature of actually being able to reach twenty-five before. Yeah. Now, I do know this might feel a little bit off path for a city council, but there are some rural underlying areas. Should rural communities have to say in the operation of community of council-owned rural water schemes?
Well, absolutely they should. I mean, in what world do you not have a say in your own water assets? I've been a strong advocate, in fact, part of what I was elected on was in opposition of Three Waters at the last government election because of it taking away communities' involvement and communities' decision-making authority in water assets. And I'm really proud, we've just adopted a new Water Services Delivery Plan that's going to create an entity or a council-controlled organisation with our neighbours in Horefenua and up in the Rangatiki, where we continue to own our water assets, we continue to make statements of expectation, statements of intent to our water organisations and continue to keep that local control of our locally owned assets. So although our water services are primarily done through our wastewater treatment plant, absolutely, if anybody in our rural community has thoughts or concerns about what the scheme should look like, I'm all ears.
Okay, Lorna, what box number?
Nine, please.
Nine. Okay. Okay. B for Bravo. Do you support political party endorsements of local government candidates? I think that's very fitting.
What a great question. I do support party political endorsement of candidates and I think it's important that I explain why, apart from my own position as a party-endorsed candidate. Party-endorsed candidates have to go through quite a vetting procedure. They have to be chosen by their local party and they have to demonstrate to those people that they are a fit and suitable candidate for election. That doesn't happen for any independent candidate, anyone can put their name forward. Secondly, I think it's a really easy shortcut for people to understand what councillors will be standing for and what's important to them should they be elected. And then those councillors can be held accountable for their decision-making after the election. Whereas if you're an independent candidate, there's nothing to stop you really saying one thing and doing another and it's hard for people to be able to predict what your stance would be on any particular issue. So I think it's actually helpful for very many people.
Okay. And Richard?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Yes, that's also another good age at some point in time, so I think that's the yard class, I think some people call it. That usually comes in at twenty-first, I've got to admit, I've never had one for mine, but I'm glad I didn't. Okay, G for golf. And Donald Trump, obviously not been here, considering it's where I hit golf, I think of him. The government and the taxpayers union have been accusing councils of being irresponsible with large percentage rates increases. What's your view?
I think it can take a national view, probably there were recent councils that are obviously much larger, but Palmerston North largely has been able to, you know, through the work of our previous councils, been able to keep costs through the down and probably what they could have been. And that largely is a good thing. Obviously, it helps workers and people in the bottom line, it's one less cost to avoid. But that doesn't mean the work is done. You obviously have to keep finding value and keep finding ways to save money and be more efficient as a council. Because at the end of the day, that's what ratepayers want in the council, they want people to be able to, you know, make sure that the money that they give towards the council is used appropriately into various services and it should help the people that need to help and provides the citizens that need to survive.
Okay, Richard, what box number? Oh, sorry, no, I've just done Richard, sorry, Michael. I'm looking wrong, I'm looking at the right person but saying the wrong name and that's the whole point of writing names on paper.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I do that a lot. Can I get, let's go, is it twenty-two?
Twenty-two, I consistently can do that, that's a very good number personally, close to my heart and I hope it is for a few others, being the birthday. We got Y for Yankee. Auckland Council has shifted to taking away recycling bins of people who mix in general waste with their recycling. Should Palmerston North City Council consider removing recycling bins for doing the same thing?
No, no, I don't think so. That, to me, seems like, you know, a couple of people being naughty, so we punish the whole lot, where the majority of us are relatively good with recycling, with those ones there. It's really going backwards, I believe. Recycling is there for a reason, you know, to help future, to help the way we reuse, reuse the things that we have. I think the world at the moment is too much into throwaway and get something brand new and shiny where we should be looking at renew, recycle. Yeah, I think it's a bad idea. I think recycling is there for a reason and, yeah, I think we definitely should keep it, really.
I will add a little bit more context, in Auckland, they have chips in the recycling bin that can tell what house is your offending user. I know that's something that is not common this part of the country, oh, you've got that here as well? Yeah, Auckland, they, yeah, they were the first to do it and I remember it was about weight, was that if you were abusing your rubbish bin by chucking concrete blocks or bricks into them, they would be able to tell exactly which house is doing it and send the bill to. And I remember this is a day when a guy called Paul Henry had his ten P M show, did a moaning groan about it. So that's how, no, they chip read the recycling bins, which I can say, where I live in Wellington, they don't have the chips in them. So, but, you know, who knows what could be happening in the future? Yeah. Okay, we've got another round and Lorna, what box number?
Ten.
Ten, I'm sure we can do ten. Okay, J for Juliet. What's it called? Spending needs to happen within budget without increasing rates, what services or luxuries will stop?
See, I don't agree with the premise of this question. When it says spending needs to happen within budget, yes, those are budgets that we've agreed with our community. Without increasing rates, that just isn't possible. Council is subject to the same cost of living pressures as any other organisation, in fact more so in some degrees because we're limited in the sorts of things that we spend on. So I just, the question itself, I disagree with. In terms of what services or luxuries will I stop, the first thing to say is that no one councillor can stop anything. In order to weigh anything on council, you need the support of a group of people. And as well as that, the way that we do things on council is that we make a proposal and consult with our community. So we need to hear from our community as to if there are particular services or things that we do that they would like us to stop and then those will be the things that I'll be happy to stop. But I'm not unilaterally going to make a decision that service X is going to stop just because I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Michael, what box number?
Again, okay, let's start again. We've got nineteen.
We've got nineteen. Do you guys have got to remember the numbers have been called out because there's been very little justification?
Fully guessing, that's fine.
Okay. W for whisky. Okay, what do you fit your, no, rephrase that because I read it wrong. Why do you think you're right for the role as councillor?
Excellent, right. I think I'm right for the role as councillor is because I think practically, I believe that common sense, listening with compassion, leading, yeah, with care is fundamental in what I'm wanting to do. The things that I am wanting to stand for and wanting to change as far as education pathways, especially since that is such a hot topic at the moment. Also, mental health, instead of waiting for the ambulance at the bottom of the cliff, actually building a fence on the top and instead of waiting for people to fall, these are the things that I think would make me a really good councillor and right for the role. Yeah, there's a lot of innovative things that I'm thinking about, wanting to bring to the table.
Okay, Richard, what box number?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. I definitely have to say, you're good at not. Yeah, we're gonna get a little bit harder as we get closer to numbers. We've got R for Romeo. Palmerston North City Council has many places where tactical tyres are used on footpaths to assist users who are vision impaired to know where it's safe to cross and what type of crossing they're using. Is this a core function that Palmerston North City Council should provide or a nice to have?
One hundred percent core function. You know, you can't, there's no world in which allowing disabled people to move around the community with safety and dignity would be a nice to have. Those people are as much a part of the community as anybody else and they deserve to be treated with the same respect as everybody else. So, yeah, they're a hundred percent part of a core service and they make life easier for people, it's typical, so one hundred percent core service.
Okay, William, what box number?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Were you, your driver's licence was fifteen or was it changed by sixteen by the time you got there?
Would have been sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. No, yeah, I was wondering when the gap of that all changed over, because I know you're younger than me. T for Tango. What do you see as the main difference between Maori landowners and hapu in the terms of their relationship with Palmerston North City Council?
That's a really interesting question. So when we get elected to council, we swear an oath to represent all of the people from Palmerston North, whether you're on the general ward or the Maori ward. And so my view is certainly that as an elected representative, regardless of what pathway you take into being on council, your role is to work with and represent everyone in your community, no matter their background or history. And so I think certainly there is a place for, not necessarily Maori and hapu landowners, but in terms of providing space for Maori and Iwi and hapu to be involved in the decision-making process and involved in consultation and working with the community, they are a key stakeholder that we listen to. We have a Rangatano Manuatu Committee where Iwi are involved at the table on projects that are particularly related to them. It's not to say that Iwi or hapu should have a final say on any decision, but they certainly are an important stakeholder consultant when you're doing any project, much like the rest of the community. So I don't see it as a huge difference. I see it as one of the areas of strength where we can work with people regardless of their backgrounds.
Okay, and we've got a new order and William, you get to go up first. Oh goodness, we're getting into dangerous territory now, is twelve available?
Twelve's still available.
But you're right, we're getting into dangerous territory. Okay. A A. Do you support household food waste collection to stop organic waste from going to landfill?
It's not the question on the screen.
Oh, what one did it end up on the screen?
Quite happy to answer either.
I know what's happened. I've, no, 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 no. No, I know what's happened, the stream deck's sending the message to the wrong slide. Okay, I've had to manually intervene.
Yep, all right. I feel to a degree this is what I answered earlier on the question of whether or not we could utilise food waste for biogas. So it's a question that we've sort of well traversed. In short, I'd say what I said previous still stands, we've trialled a food waste collection in Palmerston North, it's one of the areas we're looking at. As I said, I've got concerns around the cost of delivering the service versus what we might be able to do otherwise, but certainly an area I'm open to and interested in looking at. The trial certainly showed that by providing a food waste collection, it did reduce the waste that went to landfill. I can't remember the exact percentage off the top of my head, but it was a significant reduction. So well worth looking at, particularly as we grow as a city to provide more capacity at our waste processing spaces, could be another avenue for doing that. But I'd be very interested to see how the costs stack up and that'll be my key consideration when we get to that point, whether or not it's worth to go ahead or not.
Thank you for that. And I've fixed the problem in the stream deck and yes, it was going to twenty-eight, not twenty-seven in the slide thing that's inside the system. Okay, now, switch to another window, Michael.
Oh, what have we got in the tens?
Got eleven and fourteen.
Let's go fourteen.
Fourteen. Okay, we've got K for kite. How do you plan to use deliberative democracy to ensure residents can directly contribute to the challenges our coun- community faces? I nearly said council there.
Um, that is a good question. I think really, I mean, contribute to the challenges the community faces, um, is having a, a face-to-face, having a one-to-one, uh, conversation, um, being open and available really to, um, to see what we're doing. Being, um, yeah, as, as the word said before, uh, transparent, um, with what we're actually doing with, um, yeah, with, with the funds, with the budget, um, we were up to, um, and, and we're, what our next stages as well to actually have a informed, um, yeah, um, conversation really for people who are, are really interested and those who are kind of thinking, um, and making it more, um, available for, for residents of Palmerston North to actually have a say.
Okay, Lorna, what box number?
Ooh, um, 30?
Uh, we don't have 30. Well, you got up to 28. Uh, we're already taking 28. 27, 27. Okay, we got Z for Zulu. I'm fairly nervous when I reach this part of the sheet. What, what's one big opportunity or challenge you see for the district?
Uh, well, um, I think the biggest challenge we've got in front of us at the moment is managing the changeover of the water services. Um, we've been tasked to do it in quite a short space of time by government. Um, we've been, uh, running quite fast and making decisions very quickly. Um, it's been difficult. The legislation isn't, um, even often in place by the time we've got to make a decision. But ultimately, what we need to come out with at, at the end of the process is a, a safe, effective and, and cost-effective method of supplying water, of managing stormwater and of dealing with wastewater for the whole district. Um, and, uh, you know, I think council still has a strong role to play over the next couple of years to ensure that the, um, council-controlled organisation that we set up in conjunction with our partners does provide all of those things. Um, and it will be challenging, um, but I think it's very important that we, we, we come out with the goods.
Okay, Richard, what box number?
11.
11. D for dinosaur. What is your view on residential, commercial and industrial growth in the district or in the city?
I think it goes without saying, Palmerston North is obviously a growing city. I mean, we'll be over a hundred thousand residents pretty quickly. Um, so as a council, that's one of the core functions I think we need to, uh, core things we need to look at is we need to make sure that we grow, uh, in a sustainable way, um, and making sure that there is actually capacity, um, within our voting network, uh, wastewater and, uh, obviously that's going to be controlled by the, uh, the upcoming water, um, organisation. But, you know, making sure that our core services grow with our city and then in, you know, 10, 20, 30 years' time, we're not sitting there left with massive, uh, shortcomings in our systems.
Okay, now we've got four bo- four, four question cards also in there, four candidates. Richard, what box number? You've got two, four, six or 26? Go for four. Okay, we've got N for November. What will you do to stop poor council expenditure? Allocate resources to critical infrastructure and rein in huge increases? I gather that is meant to be rates.
I think again, it's, it's getting back to, you know, it's getting back to the core basics of what councils should, should be doing. We should be focusing on, on our water, our, our rubbish collection, you know, our voting networks and all things like that. And at the same time, we need to build for the future. We need to make sure that we have, um, the systems in place, not just for the next three years, um, for the council term, but we need to be, um, set up ourselves for the next 20, 30 and 40 years. Um, you can see large and low problems that our councils and county across reserve are facing now is because we've got down broke for the last 30 years and you can't continue pipping that camp in the road. Um, otherwise your systems will fail, um, and they have been showing and failing. And that's a big part of the reason why we're seeing large late centres at the moment. Um, so we need to invest in our future, but in a sustainable, measured and balanced way.
And we have button from Lorna.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to address this because I think there is the perception that, um, we're not allocating resources to critical infrastructure. The majority of our resources are allocated to critical infrastructure. And on top of that, we've, we've a plan in place to increase the amount we spend on renewals, um, every single year. Um, so I think we're already allocating, um, a sufficient level of resourcing, increasing level of resourcing to critical infrastructure. And in terms of huge increases, we're not one of those councils that got huge increases in rates. Um, there was a recent, uh, sort of league table, government league table published, and we were well below the median, which was nine point something increase in rates this year. We were down at 6.6. So I don't think it's fair to say, uh, that we are not spending money on critical infrastructure or that we're, um, making huge increases in rates. That simply isn't the case. We're very, very careful about our expenditure and we look at every single line in the budget every single year.
Okay, William. Got number two.
Number two?
If you can't put me number one, I'll be number two. Not 25. Okay, we've got L for Lima. Do you support Maori wards such as our own tier? Now, I might get this wrong, Ron. Uh, tier poa, Maori ward, straight, uh, strength of democracy, why or why not? Did I get the name right or wrong? I think I ballsed it up. Tipua, tipua.
Yeah, it's an interesting question, obviously a topical one with referendum coming up. At the end of the day, that choice is going to be in the hands of our community, so it's not, um, up to each individual candidate. Now it's going to referendum. For me, I supported, because we've had, um, two very good Maori ward councillors that I've had the pleasure of working with the last three years, I supported advocating to government saying, look, could we reconsider the way in which we're running this referendum? Could we reconsider, um, the community voice? But ultimately, when it comes down to me, I'm, I'm not going to vote to keep them. Um, my view is twofold. Um, one is many Maori colleagues and friends of mine said to me at the last election, William, why wasn't I allowed to vote? I said, well, you were, but you must be on the Maori roll. We only had two candidates, so there was no vote there. What Maori wards do is you sacrifice your voting power for guaranteed representation. So everybody else in the non-Maori roll gets to influence 13 seats. On the Maori roll, you get to influence two seats. So that's a sacrifice that some people are willing to make, not one that I think strengthens local democracy. I don't think we've got an electorate that is unable to elect, uh, Maori people on the general roll. In fact, our local MP is Cook Islander. We've got many, um, diverse voices and people in our council at the moment. So I think, um, there's strength in putting it to the general election and, um, all being voted on as one cohort.
Okay, Michael.
Hello. Uh, what's the numbers?
We've got six or 26?
Let's go six.
Okay, AB. Now that one with the pesky little slide that didn't line up before. What's your biggest priority for the next term and how do you intend on delivering on that?
Excellent. Right. Um, so I, they kind of go hand in hand. Um, with mental health, um, education and cost of living, um, they kind of, it, it's kind of like a, a one, one-stop shop. Um, with cost of living, um, changing some thi- um, some things that, that we are doing at the moment that we can, we can change, um, which will help, um, put some more money back into community, um, with mental health, uh, working with, uh, different entities in Palmerston North as well to, to bring a safer, safer place for education, for younger, um, the, the youth, the ones at school at the moment, for a safe place to study, safe place to learn, um, to lower stigma. Um, and that all kind of goes hand in hand with, um, just making Palmerston North more, yeah, vibrant and, and, um, a better place for everyone.
And we have a button from William.
For me, the thing that scares me the most about the next term of council in the next 10 years is our long-term plan. I didn't vote for it. It sets out a pathway to rates doubling in 10 years plus a thousand dollar wastewater treatment plant levy. We've managed to reduce that thousand dollar levy by creating our new seat water service, CCO, but the rates component of that is still huge. There's a hundred and twenty million dollars of additional rates revenue that needs to be raised in the next 10 years just to help repay debts to keep us in our cap. And so I'm really worried about the programme of expenditure we have, particularly the amount of debt that we're going to need to raise. By creating this water service entity, it creates an extra $900 million of headroom for our council. And my fear is that that 900 million will get filled. So for me, in the next three years, my priority will be making sure that we reduce our debt cap. It was, I didn't vote for increasing it to 250%, and now we're creating that extra capacity. I believe we need to reduce it back down, um, so that we can live within our means and make sure that we don't just take it as a free ticket to spend a lot more money than we are currently. Um, and by using that and by reprioritising, um, increasing our investment in our roads and footpaths by reducing our expenditure elsewhere would be my big priorities.
And Lorna, what box number would you like? Your only choice is 26.
I'll take 26, please.
Okay. Oh God, this is really fitting. Uh, you've got A. What political party are you linked to? And I think it's pretty damn obvious.
This is a mystery.
Well, I am linked to the Labour Party, but I'm more than linked. I've been a member for very many years. And I've been endorsed by the Labour Party to stand and, and represent them on council. Um, what I think is interesting is that we do have a number of people standing who are active members of their own political parties that are standing as independents. Now, I don't think those people are independent at all. And I think that they should be very transparent about what political party they are a member of, they are active in, who's helping them, et cetera. So I'm very proud to stand as a Labour Party candidate. And I stand on my record of, um, doing lots of very good things for the community over the time I've been on council. So I hope, uh, very much that people will understand what standing for a political party means. It doesn't mean that anyone's telling you what decisions to make. It means that you're clear about your values and what guides your decision-making.
Thank you for that. Uh, we're going to take a short break now and we'll be back after the break for hard-hitting questions. Back and let's get ready for hard-hitting questions. Just wait a moment while Nick puts up the graphic. Questions works is where every candidate gets asked the same question. They cannot use their button cards, because everyone's answering the question. And they cannot use their deferred cards, because they're going to end up answering it anyway. So, hard-hitting question number one. Do you think the council is doing enough in the terms of wastewater treatment and disposal? That feels very personal fitting. Michael, you get to go first.
Thank you. I think it's a good start, absolutely. Looking at future-proofing, looking at the wastewater as it is at the moment, seeing what's happening and issues. I think it's a great, great thing to start with. It's definitely a long way to go, but I think it's a great, great beginning of what we've got as well. Yeah, that is pretty much my stance on it. I'm pretty quick with the answer there. Yeah, it's pretty much it. Thank you.
No problem. Richard?
Since I have a lot of experience with this, I've been waist-deep in the sludge tank and understanding of our wastewater facility and our assets. And I've been privileged to do maintenance and build part of our assets and our infrastructure. And one thing I'd say is we do have one of the best wastewater teams in the entire country. They are some of the hardest, most hardworking, most knowledgeable people that we have. And I think it's council's responsibility to enable those people to be successful. You know, listen to their ideas when they have them, because they are very smart people, and empower them to be successful. Because at the end of the day, we're all working towards the same thing. We have a very large, you know, there's obviously a lot of changes coming to how that wastewater service is delivered. And it's up to council to sort of enable our team to be successful, because it's in everyone's best interests.
Okay, Lorna?
Thank you. I think, you know, everybody knows that we're in the middle of a project to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant at the moment. And I think there might be some thought out there in the public that we're doing that because there's fault or we're not doing enough in the wastewater space. The main reason that we're upgrading is because our resource consent has come to an end, and we need to make sure that the new wastewater treatment plan treats wastewater to a higher degree than we are doing at the moment. So I think in terms of where we're at now, you know, the system and the treatment that was put in by previous councils was a very good system. But over time, standards have increased. And now we need to upgrade that wastewater treatment plant to meet the new standards. So I'm supportive that we do that, trying to do it in the most cost-effective way possible.
Okay, William?
It's an interesting question, the wording "doing enough". Either you can flush your toilet and it goes down, or it doesn't. And so, at the moment, yes, we are doing enough and that the system is functioning. But Lorna's quite right, we've got a massive nature-caused wastewater plant treatment upgrade programme that we're working on. And so one of the big decisions that the next council will have is what sort of shape that project takes. I remember when I was a candidate last time, they were talking $400 million for the plant. And I got on council and it was $500 million. Then we got the long-term plan and it was $640 million. And so what council did is we put a cheque on that project. We said, can we go back to the table, look at the new standards, look at modern technologies, and look at a few of our options again? I'm really proud of that decision, because now we've had a paper to us, which has shown us a range of options from $290 million up into the 700-800 millions. And we're looking at two different ways of discharging. One, either we go straight to the river, or one we do a mix of river and land. And so that'll be an interesting question for the next council to address. But for me, my core drive will be what can our community afford?
Okay, let's get on to hard-hitting question number two. Are you comfortable with the way the council manages its debt position? William?
Very fittingly. You get to go first. In short, no. I voted against our long-term plan, like I spoke about, largely because of the debt profile that we're looking at raising. Council has some massive projects on the books. One is the wastewater treatment plant. One is obviously the upgrade of our water assets and our roading assets. We've got a massive project that is set for year seven and eight of the long-term plan around upgrading our city library and our museum. Part of the reason council's got a negative audit opinion is because we assumed that we would have 90% external funding for those two projects, each about $70 million. So 140 in total. But then didn't explain where we're going to get that funding from. I have real concern that that will fall back on the council books. The only way you're able to raise that level of external funding is to do it as a private partnership. Somebody else builds it and then we rent it off them for the next 50 years. And so, I know that's a long way of explaining a few examples of what we do with our debt position, but I voted against raising our debt capacity. Sort of like a gas, once you've got 250% capacity, there are always more projects to fill it. So my focus is making sure that we have enough capacity in system politics, 230%, not 250%. But yeah, I'm really concerned about the debt pathway for our council.
Love the words you mentioned about other revenue sources there. Michael?
Yeah, it is a very concerning, concerning, yeah, position at the moment. I think there is a lot to be said in looking at the assets that we have already. Yeah, just really, really looking at the assets that we have at the moment, where we own 100% of something as well, where we can actually tap into that as well, changing the debt. I'm not a fan of raising debt at all. More looking at the budget that we have. A budget should really, you know, look at like a shopping list at home, you know, the milk, eggs and bread and not a cheese board. Where, yeah, we spend $300 on cheese boards sort of thing. I think we have a lot, yeah, to really delve into with the debt that we have and try and do what we can do with the means that we have now and not have to raise any more funding.
Okay, Richard? That was working quite well just before. Oh, oh, yes. No, no, no. That sounds like a Paul reference.
I think the main thing, you know, debt is necessary in order to obviously upgrade our infrastructure. But it needs to be in a sustainable and managed way. You can't just borrow to the absolute eyeballs and hope that everything's going to be okay. But I think, you know, going forward, I think the council needs to really look at different ways of raising revenue outside of rates. We have some wonderful services here, especially around our recycling facility and that sort of things. And, you know, I think exploring a situation where we could become that regional hub to the lower North Island in various spaces, whether that's the trade waste or the wastewater or the recycling space. And then the smaller councils around us could then obviously feed into that. And that could add a new revenue stream outside of rates and outside of debt.
Okay, Lorna?
Well, I am happy with some of the decisions we've made around what we use debt for. We don't use debt for operating expenses. So the analogy of the shopping list and debt just doesn't hold up. We use debt for renewal capital expenditure and for new capital expenditure. And the reason we do that is it spreads the cost of those assets over a generation. So that people who will be using those assets in 30 years' time are helping to pay for them, not just those people who are living in the city today, because all of those people will be getting benefit from them. So it's a fairer way to fund capital assets. In terms of, you know, some of the statements that we hear, and we've heard just now about, you know, excessive borrowing, we're well within our debt cap. We're nowhere near the debt cap at all. And we're careful about whether or not we decide to take on further debt for a capital project. We've even factored in extra debt repayment over the long-term plan to cover that. So I just think we need to take a more measured view about how we're talking about debt. It can be useful.
Okay. Let's get on to hard-hitting question number three. What is your position on retaining the Tia Pua? Pua, I've got that right? Pua. Maori ward for the Palmerston North City Council and the Tonga Maori constituency for the Horizon Regional Council? And why do you hold that position? Richard, you get to go first.
So I support Maori wards, mainly for the same reason that I support rural wards and those sorts of, and things like that. Because I believe that anything in a democracy that increases inclusion and involvement naturally leads to a better process and a better government overall. You get more voices at the table and you get more listening happening, basically. So therefore, in theory, you should have a better governance system, because you're taking all voices into account and you're not shutting people out of the table. So that's why I will be voting to keep Maori wards.
Okay, Lorna?
Well, I'm a very strong supporter of Maori wards, always have been. All of my voting has been in favour of Maori wards. And I was part of the council team that went and did a submission to the Select Committee on retaining Maori wards. Why? Because I think it's a fundamental part of the treaty on which this country is based, that Maori were guaranteed partnership and participation. And Maori wards and councils are no different to Maori seats in the parliament. They guarantee representation for the indigenous people of this country. And that is purely and simply a matter of fairness to me. So we've had an excellent first term with Maori ward councillors. They have hugely contributed and added to the manner of the council. And I will be very, very happy to see them returned for another three years. And I do urge everybody, in fact, to vote in favour of retaining Maori wards for the referendum.
Michael?
Yes, I also am agreeing that we should keep it. I think it is, it's a great thing. A lot of Maori friends only vote because there is a Maori seat. I believe that it is inclusion and I believe that it is Maori looking after Maori. I think that it is a great thing for strengthening New Zealand as a whole, Palmerston North as a whole, that there is someone to speak on behalf. And yeah, that it is actually something that is forward-thinking. Yeah, I am a strong believer that I will be voting for that as well.
Okay, William?
Thank you. I have sort of answered this question already in one of the ones that was drawn out of the box. But what I would say is Maori wards are a very blunt tool to fix a very complicated problem in terms of Maori representation. I don't think the argument washes that our electorate simply wouldn't elect Maori people if they stood on the general roll. In fact, our number one polling councillor for many years was of Crook Island descent. So I just don't accept the argument that Maori wards are the only way that we can provide Maori representation in our community. As I said before, it's a significant trade-off. You get guaranteed representation for a significant decrease in your voting power. And for many Maori people, losing that voting power, I don't think is the right decision. So, look, we've had a good term, we've got two great Maori ward councillors, and I'm quite sure that if they stood on the general roll, they would have a great chance of getting elected there. So I personally won't be voting to retain them at the referendum, but will be very respectful of whatever the result is from our community. I think at the end of the day, now it's in the hands of the voters and the hands of the public. I'm looking forward to seeing what the result is, to keep them or to remove them.
Okay, I think that's it for hard-hitting questions. So time for closing statements on why you should get your number one preference, why should the voter give you their number one preference vote to be next elected councillor? Lorna, you get to go first.
Thank you. Firstly, I think it's very important that we retain a number of experienced councillors. Local government is going through a difficult series of changes at the moment. When you're first elected to council, it takes you a little time to get up and running and understand how to make things happen. So I do think it's important that we return experienced councillors. Secondly, I'm a hard-working and capable person. I'm well-connected in the community. And I take a very diligent approach to council. I'm known for always doing my homework, for reading the papers, for asking the right questions, and also for coming up with inventive solutions when required. So I do hope that you will vote for me as your number one candidate, to support community, to stick up for vulnerable people, and to make sure that we have sensible and evidence-based decision-makers around the table. Thank you.
Michael?
Cool. Thank you, everyone, for being here and online as well. So for me, I think Palmerston North's best future is, I definitely agree with having people that are previous experience and working with those as well. But there needs to be a fresh way. If we keep doing the same things over, and expecting the same, and it's just going to expect the same results again. So whether it's safer streets, local business, working with local businesses, environmental, or definitely mental health as well as where I'm really standing, kind of building that fence at the top of the cliff. Yeah, I think for me, I want to work with you, not over you, and I want to listen to what you have to say and work for Palmerston North. Yeah, so that is for me. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Richard?
So I believe I'd make it a council, mainly because, you know, I believe my perspective and my experience would be a valuable asset to the council. It's a voice that I feel sometimes is lacking, is the voice of the working person, the person that understands the hardships in which we all face. You know, I really want to do this job mainly because I want to give back to my community. And I think, you know, a measured approach to the situations and the problems we face as a council is somewhere where I'd be very helpful. Because at the end of the day, we all have to deal with the consequences of every council that's come before us and every council that comes in the future. So I want to be part of that team to make our community a better place for everyone that lives in it.
Okay, William?
I'd really appreciate your support if you're back on council for a few simple reasons. One is, I'm hard-working. I don't just complain about a problem. If I see something's wrong, I put my hand up and I do something about it. I've moved many motions in the last three years. I haven't just sat back and let it slide. Anytime there's been an opportunity to prosecute council spending, I've done so. But also, where there's opportunity to invest in our community when needed, supporting new buildings when necessary, supporting initiatives such as our gold car parking for our seniors as a way of giving back. So for me, council's about a balance. We've got to make sure that rate increases are manageable. And I have real fear of what the next 10 years will look like. So we need sensible, hard-working councillors around the table who bring that common sense to the council table. For me, it's going to be about making sure that we increase our footparking, roading maintenance through sensible reprioritisation. maintenance through sensible reprioritisation of council spending over the next three years. It's going to be making sure that we look after our debt headroom to provide that future for councils and that future space for councils where they might need it. And making sure that we have good, clear prosecution of council spending to make sure we're getting the absolute best out of every rate paid dollar. And I'd love your support if you're back around the table to do that.
Okay, now we'll get to some housekeeping. This is the joys about, again, to explain how voting system works. Because one of the great things I've, I've done and thanks to the Tauranga City Council Special Loa Bodies is working out the ins and outs of how STV works. So in order to get elected onto the Palmerston North City Council and you'd need, with 13 positions available, whoever becomes the 13 councillors on there will need to achieve 7.14% of the first preference votes plus one, which will be what the quota will be. Now, how things work with STV is it starts off with its first round and it goes, have there been enough candidates selected? Obviously, if there are enough candidates, and it starts off with the top. If candidates are over the quota on the top, those candidates' positions are safe. The, the excess percentage of their votes, say they got 1,000 votes, but they only needed 650 to get on board. Was it 0.35 of those votes transferred down to their second preferences and go on down? So when you have redistributions from the top, it is the percentage of the votes that didn't need to retain the position get moved on. And that's why you see those point numbers in there. For when it comes to eliminations from the bottom, the bottom are full whole numbers or whole impartial numbers that transfer up. So when it comes to voting, please make sure you look hard at ranking your candidates on there. Because it's not just going to be your first preference vote that will help sit there and choose the selection, but your second, your third, your fourth, and probably go right down to your 13th and possibly your 25th preference might, it will help shape this council. So feel free to take a look at, look at, you can check out our, it's in the ballot shows. You can also check out other resources out there. We encourage people to look at all sorts of avenues when it comes to voting to find out how to vote. And that's my little bit about STV. It's a bit weird with the number of positions because I'm used to it being, was it three or four, considering where I live in Wellington and Paikawa, Kaua Southern, where we only get two councillors and we're the oddball ward out in the city. Yeah, so I'd like to say thank you to the candidates for coming today and making this show work. I'd like to thank the audience for doing a brilliant role, clapping, keeping, keeping it, and making it work. I'd like to say thank Stacey for doing all the jobs of trying to do the graphics. Sorry, the questions are coming out on the later end. That makes your job harder to sit down there and get the graphics ready. I will, and I'll be on to the merril questions very soon because they need to get out because we've missed our 48 hour deadline that we're meant to do there for the merril debate tomorrow. So we can send, send that off. And also like to thank Paul for jumping in as remote editor today to take the load off Stacey. Thank you for doing that. Any comments from candidates or audience that they would love to make?
Just thank you very much for organising it.
No problem.
You know, we appreciate the fact that you're all volunteering to do this. And if it helps spark a bit more interest in the election, then that's a great thing. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, Nick, can you roll on the closing credits?